Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a League of Women Voters A B C Forum for candidates running for Anoka County Commissioner District 7. Thank you to the Candidates, the City of Blaine, and North Metro Cable TV for making this event possible. This year, the League of Women Voters is holding our Meet the Candidate forums without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. I'm Sandy Connor from the Anoka/Blaine/Cunrappis Area League of Women Voters and a resident of neighboring Blaine. I do not have a vote for the county commissioner district. Both of the Candidates were invited to join us this evening. Candidate Jo Sturtevant was unable to join us. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any Candidates for office or political parties. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. That's what this forum is about, informing voters. If you are interested in the League, please visit our website at L W V A B C M N dot org. Women and men age 18 and older are invited to join. In the 2020 election, Anoka County residents will elect commissioners in every one of the seven districts. Welcome to District 7 County Commissioner Candidate Mandy Meisner. In lieu of opening statements, we will begin with two questions which were submitted to the Candidates in advance. This will be followed by questions from the public which were submitted in advance, including one submitted by the Council of Metro Area Leagues, C M A L, which recently concluded a study of metro area counties for their accountability, communication, and transparency. We will end with a closing statement from the Candidate. For the first two questions, answers are limited to 90 seconds. So let's get started with our first introductory question. Candidate Meisner, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you and good evening. First of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Mandy Meisner and I am lucky to be an Anoka County Commissioner for the new District 7 representing Fridley, Columbia Heights, and Hilltop. I want to thank the voters in my district for allowing me to be their commissioners in the first place. My current occupation is Anoka County Commissioner where I'm finishing my first term in office and seeking reelection. But most of my experience has been in community service, working with a variety of nonprofits, helping them to build partnerships, create communication tools, and raise funds. I am a connector and a collaborator, and this is what I bring to my role as county commissioner. My leadership style is about promoting partnerships with all stakeholders. My motivation to seek reelection is simple. I work hard to improve people's lives, and I'm just getting started. Because I'm finishing up my first term in office, I do have an advantage of understanding how to navigate county government. I sit on multiple committees, both at the county level and regionally. Some of them include IT, Human Services, the Metropolitan Emergency Service Board, the Workforce Development Board, the State Community Health Board, and I currently chair the Property Records and Taxation Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second question, what are your goals for the future of Anoka County?
Great question. Some of my top priorities for Anoka County are to support and develop solutions around our workforce crisis, public safety, and forwarding mental health and addiction initiatives. In every sector, there are not enough people to fill jobs. I serve on the Workforce Development Board where we are dedicated to build pathways to new or better employment and fill the pipelines for all sectors. Anoka County is also the fourth-largest county in the state. We are one of the biggest employers of the region. In this way, I also see long-term challenges for us, and I'm working to start on a county-wide youth internship program collaborating with our schools and staff department heads. In public safety, the Board needs to build a new county jail and 911 call center. I'm working hard to develop a facility that satisfies all state and federal mandates, functions well for jail staff, and can be paid for in creative ways so the burden doesn't fall solely on taxpayers. Mental health and addiction issues have only grown worse during the pandemic. Although workforce and public safety are the forefront worries of most of us, we cannot forget about mental health and addiction, and we must keep pushing forward. For example, some of the things being piloted right now are embedded social workers within Columbia Heights Police Department, and the data around that is impressive. This is just one area where I would love to see adopted throughout Anoka County. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Meisner. I will now ask the Candidate to respond to questions submitted by the public via our website and questions of importance to League of Women Voters. Responses are limited to one minute. This is the question submitted by C M A L. What processes can you think of to create more transparency between county agencies and the public?
I love this question because transparency has been an issue I've been advocating for since day one. So one of them, I'll just stick to one, which would be allowing public commentary in our full Board meetings. This is not a practice right now. The public is allowed to make their statements during committee meetings, but it is not on official record because it's in a committee meeting, as well as not all seven of us are ever in a committee meeting typically. So this is one initiative that I will continue to advocate for. We, as a county Board, work for the public. The public should have a voice.
Thank you. What personal traits would make you well-suited for this office?
Well, you know, I think that the county, the thing about being elected officials, we all bring our own individual traits. As I mentioned, for myself, I'm a collaborator and a connector. So I feel very lucky that my history has been in community service. So my strong suit and my wheelhouse are absolutely listening to others, figuring out what the common ground is, and finding a way to keep initiatives moving forward for the betterment of all.
Thank you. What do you see as the future of public transportation in Anoka County? In your district, what are the current public transportation needs?
Okay, so public transportation can be thought of in a couple different ways. A lot of the public think about that as roads and bridges, which is absolutely one function. Another public transportation would be transit, buses. So for my district, which is Fridley/Columbia Heights, it's very urban, I would say having really good transit abilities is definitely a priority beyond the standard maintenance of just, you know, not having potholes in your, in your street. But for my district, the bus line F I know is being looked at and being worked upon right now. So that's a rapid bus transit line that will come into North Town Mall and will be extremely helpful for those in my community.
Thank you. Should county residents have an opportunity to be heard at our regular county Board, county Commissioner Committees, county Board work sessions, and county advisory board meetings? If yes, how would you work to make that happen? If no, why not?
Yeah, so I already stated that it has been one of the things that I've been advocating for. So we'll take the, the full county Board meeting as an example because I know some of the worry with my colleagues is quote-unquote, "It will be a free-for-all." Well, there are things that you can do to put in place to manage that. So just like in our committee meetings, we can have a two-minute maximum time for each speaker, as an example. Another thing that we could do is anyone who would want to speak to the full Board would have to sign up previously so they couldn't necessarily just show up the day of. So it would be simple but standard things like that that I think we could really shape to manage what that looks like and still allow public commentary.
Thank you. Should the county video-record and post to its YouTube channel their workshops and committee meetings? Why or why not?
Yes, 100% absolutely. This is one of the things that I have been talking about because of the pandemic. So the, the plus about the pandemic is that we really utilize technology to allow ourselves to have meetings and communications when we could not physically be there. So we did that during the pandemic, and I said, you know, "Why don't we continue this because this is better access for the public?" Unfortunately, we did not do that, much to my chagrin, but that is something that could easily be done. And in terms of funding, we have federal funding, both with the CARES Act dollars. We got $34 million that round. Our ARPA funds, Anoka County got almost $79 million. There's plenty of money where we could have made technology improvements if we would have wanted that. But, so yes, I think that we should and still should be doing that.
Thank you. Currently, committees such as Parks, Transportation, Human Services, Property Records, and Taxation are composed only of county commissioners. Would you find it appropriate to add members of the public to Commissioner Committees which make recommendations to the full Board as the internal audit committee does? Why or why not?
So for myself, I will always say yes to any opportunity to expand the table because I think that for policymakers, I can only make a good policy if I truly understand the community that I'm representing and their challenges and their needs. And I think what can easily happen in government is, you know, you know, we get used to the whole process and the, and the protocols, but unless we are boots on the ground and able to listen to what's happening, we sometimes aren't in touch with the subtle changes that are happening. So yes, I would be very open to that, whether that would be, I don't know if that would be directly in our committee or if we'd set up a separate advisory group, which we do have multiple examples in, in other areas. Either way, though, any, any chance again to expand the table and allow public input, I would be a supporter of.
Thank you. Are there ways that you'd like to change Anoka County's relationship with the Metropolitan Council, especially with the controversial North Star Rail? If so, how?
That is a really tricky question. So I have been struggling with this for the last couple of years as a commissioner. So long story short, I will say everyone is doing their, their job. Everyone has a different position, a slightly different perspective. What has been pretty frustrating for myself with North Star is that the full Board has never had a conversation with Met Council around this. We've had two representatives, the Chair of Transportation and the Chair of our Board. Now, that's fine, except the conversations has clearly not gone well. So what I have done because of my frustration and particularly with this newest contract that is still not agreed upon by the Met Council and Anoka County, I have set up with the Met Council a full Board meeting. I believe it's October 24th right now, again, with the full purpose of let's have this conversation and try to figure this out because this, this is not working, what we're doing, this strong-arm, arm-wrestling tactic. So we need to sit down and actually talk to one another.
Thank you. Now I have a two-pronged question about taxes, everybody's favorite topic. For what reasons would you support property tax increases? Or what services are you willing to curtail or eliminate to avoid property tax increases?
Okay, so the first part is, would I, would I support tax increases?
For what reasons would you support tax?
Oh, for what reasons? Oh, okay. Well, yes, and the, the reasons are the same reasons every year. I know it's no fun. Taxes are no fun, and trust me, I don't like saying I'm going to raise your taxes either, but taxes are an investment, and Anoka County property taxes are supposed to be for operating expenses. 80% of our levy is actually for our workforce, salaries and benefits. So government has to function like any other business entity where we have a cost of business. Part of that investment comes from property taxes. So in my opinion, at the very least, property taxes should be increased every year to at least match the cost of living and inflation when those flare up. Oh, I'm sorry. And then there's a part two. I'm sorry, what was the second part?
What services are you willing to curtail or eliminate to avoid property tax increases?
Oh, uh, what's, none, none. So for my district, District 7, this is already a state-recognized, underserved community. I will not sacrifice needed services that people need. Now, to get lean, I am willing to look at the infrastructure. There's always things that we can do to be smarter about our finances, whether it is efficiencies with staff, equipment, what kind of contracts do we have out? So in those ways, I will absolutely look to, to minimize our taxes or budget, but not in services, not for my community.
Thank you. How will you work to get reliable quality internet for all areas of the county?
So that is something that we are tackling right now. The pandemic did reveal the inequities around connectivity and the fact that being connected is, is a, is a need. It's not, it's not a frivolous thing any longer. So we have allocated a total of $7 million to tackle this problem as a county. We're not exactly sure how we're going to implement that, but I am very excited and happy that we are doing that. In my district specifically, for District 7, the, the problem is a little bit different. So in rural areas, it is about connectivity. It's about lack of fiber. In my area, people have the, the connections of fiber, but they, they can't afford it. So they go to places like libraries, about 20, that's increased 20%, just to use the internet. So in my area, we're going to have to apply that a little bit differently, in my opinion. It can't be direct fiber only. It'll have to be some other kind of support where, again, we can, we can help residents afford the connectivity because it's already there for, for my district, but that barrier of being able to afford that is not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you open to or opposed to unionizations of larger segments of the county workforce, such as the clerical staff, social workers, financial workers, and library staff?
So myself personally, I'm definitely a supporter of unions. I come from a family of union workers, so I am biased about that. My dad and my grandfather both were able to provide a very nice lifestyle for their families because of unions. Now, as a commissioner, I will say that I don't promote per se unions. I do think that if there are any parts of the county, though, with staff, and they feel like they want to unionize, 100% they should do that. There should be no barriers. There should be no intimidation to do so, and I fully support any area of the county staff to explore becoming unionized.
Thank you. What will you do to help the Anoka County library system accomplish their mission? What do you see as a good relationship between the Anoka County Board and the Anoka County library system? How do you define the county Board's role in regard to the library system?
When you say "system," I'm gonna, I'm just gonna assume maybe staff is maybe the, the question. So I would say between the Anoka County Board and library staff. So libraries are really special, in my opinion. So they, they have this very socially-driven mission where they just want to help community and educate them and just be that resource for them and whatever it means for the community. And so they're just very generous with, with their work and their time. So as far as the Board and the staff, I think that we, as a Board, could become more educated, frankly, about what is their goals and their vision as library staff and how do they want to affect communities? And mind you, as a county, that's going to look a little bit different. In my area, that vision is going to look a little bit different than it does in Rum River. So those things are, are things that we should be sensitive to as a county Board, but I think just getting educated in a more regular fashion would be extremely helpful of how we could then best support our library staff.
Thank you. Should there be term limits for your office, and if so, how could it be done?
Ooh, okay. Well, honestly, I do believe in term limits, even though the President and our Governor are the only ones that have them. Now, that's because of my brand of politics. I truly believe that I am here to represent my community, and so when I can be in touch with my community is the best way that I can represent them. Over time, I think it is natural to get away from that and become more of the government machinery. So I, I would actually support having term limits. How would that be done? I guess that would be done through legislation, which is not my, not my role, so I kind of a little bit get out of a jail card with that one, but that's my opinion about term limits.
Thank you. And if you liked that question, should there be a code of ethics for the county Board? Why or why not?
Um, yes, yes, the Board should have their own code of ethics. This is something that I became an advocate for about two years ago. And essentially, many departments in our county have their own code of ethics as well. And the reason why you have code of ethics is because it is a gesture and a goal that we are saying, "We are going to strive to do and be better because we are elected officials." And I think to just say that in a very public way and figure out what that means as a Board is a good thing. Public trust is really important, and these are one of the small but very important ways that we could do it. There's really no reason why we cannot have a code of ethics except for a lack of political courage or political will.
Thank you. Why should or shouldn't the county continue to work with Healios, the human resources consulting firm that produced the study showing county is well under the average median rate of pay in the metro area?
I always think it's a very good idea to incorporate folks that are not in the county. So to have a fresh pair of eyes and then having a different perspective. So right now, it is Healios. I would be proponent of that. I think that is really important to hear messages and get the information from other sources. I will also say that in the work sessions that they have presented, this is really complicated data. I really struggle to, to keep up. I had a ton of questions because each category had subcategories and was connected with, you know, just tweaking one little thing could completely change the outcome. So it's very important that we have professionals who really know what they're doing and they're experts in it. Healios is one of those, so I'd be very comfortable keeping Healios as one of those contractors.
Thank you. What will you do to help the Anoka County Historical Society accomplish its mission? The current county Board and city of Anoka appear to be at odds over the future of the Anoka County Historical Society's current location at the corner of Third and Van Buren. What do you think the future should be for that building? Where would you relocate the society if it has to be moved?
Hmm, I would say for the answer to that, I honestly don't know all the details about what is in the future with that. What I will say, though, as a county, when we have a partnership like we do with the Anoka Historical Society, I think 30-plus years, because they are going to potentially have to find a new building, I want to be the partner that says, "How can we help?" Now, I don't know what that means exactly, but I do not want to be the person or the voice that says, "Well, it's not really my problem as a county commissioner. It's between you and the city." This is a valuable asset to our community. Again, we have had a partnership with the county Board for, I think, 30-plus years. So looking into the future, I want to be of aid and support to them and figure that out. Like, I, I'm not sure what the options are of where they could relocate, but I would want to be a partner in that and help them as best I can.
Thank you. Highway 65 continues to be a troubling road with serious accidents all too often. What can you do about Highway 65 as a county commissioner?
So Highway 65 is, is, it needs to be, and it is a priority right now in our transportation system. So as a county commissioner, so you mentioned Highway 65, so it is in fact a highway road. It is not a county road. That being said, it doesn't matter because county residents use it all of the time. So as a county commissioner, the things that I can and do do is, again, that collaboration piece. So it is working with the city of Blaine. It is working with our state legislators, and it is working with our federal representatives to get funding. Because at the end of the day, it always boils down to, do we have enough money to get this done? So, but that means having good relationships with all of those stakeholders and being an active participant in finding what the solution is.
Thank you. Are you in favor of posting on the county website the names, contact information, and terms of office of individuals appointed to serve on county advisory boards and commissions, such as the Workforce Development Board, the County Community Corrections Advisory Board, or the Anoka County Blaine Airport Advisory Commission?
I'm sorry, the question was, am I comfortable posting their name and address or just their names?
It's posting the names, contact information, and terms of office.
Their names and terms of office, absolutely. Their contact information, if it's their private home and phone numbers, I would have to think about that, only because, you know, not, not everyone necessarily wants their, their information out in public. So if you, if you knew that, though, coming into that committee, like, this is going to be public-facing information, that would be one thing. But if it is not currently, that is a conversation I'd, I'd want to have before I, I just did it. But in terms of just public information and transparency, I don't see any problem with having names of people on committees and term limits.
Thank you. What ideas do you have to strengthen the relationship between the county and the Metropolitan Council?
Oh, okay. So we kind of talked about that a little bit in regards to North Star. Well, we, we don't have a good relationship with, with Met Council, right? So again, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to mislead anyone when I, when I say my expectation is we're going to come out of this meeting with great solutions and it's going to be an aha moment. However, we can't come to a solution at all if we don't have conversations and arm-wrestling techniques of, you know, not paying a contract in full and that's considered our payment in full, that does not make me feel good. We are the only county, that's Hennepin County, Anoka, and Sherburne, that is in that position where we're, we're not paying what we were saying we're going to. Now, there's, there's details around that. It's complicated, so it's not quite that simple, but the fact of the matter is we have to have conversations to try to figure it out rather than just blockade and, and not, and not pay. People do need transit, and we do need to figure out how to solve this.
Thank you. And now to end with a fun question.
Oh, good.
If you had the authority and money to do one thing to make life better for the residents of Anoka County, what would you do?
Oh, you know what? I think it would definitely be around transportation. So for my area, transportation is always one of the top one or two things that comes up as a barrier, whether it's to get to a job interview, whether it's get to getting their skills for a better job, whether it's for childcare, you name it. And then, you know, I mentioned that we do have strong transit in my area, which is true, but then the challenge becomes when you're having to take three buses and it takes two hours, and you have a kid, and you're trying to do all of this, and it should have taken you 20 minutes. So I would say having transportation to anyone who needs to get to the places and the things that they need to, that would be my magical wand to do that.
Thank you, Candidate Meisner, for answering our questions. I will now give you one minute for a closing statement where you get to pick what you want to say.
Well, thank you. No, thank you again, League of Women Voters, for hosting this event. I'm just going to end by basically stressing what your mission is, which is informing voters. So every seat in Anoka County is up for election on November 8th. Your voice matters. Do your homework. Make sure that you represent, or that you are voting for who you want to represent you. Early voting starts September 23rd, and general election is November 8th. To learn more about my own work initiatives and some of the history that I've done in the first term, term of office, you can go to votemandy.com. And please, if you have any questions, do not be shy. Please reach out, email me, give me a call. I'd be happy to have a conversation with you. Thank you again. I'm Mandy Meisner, Anoka County Commissioner.
The League of Women Voters thanks the Candidate for speaking to voters about the issues and for running for county commissioner. Thanks to viewers for your interest in becoming informed voters. As we move through the election season, links to all our local forums are located at L W V A B C M N dot org. You can find information on voting options or find your polling place on the Minnesota Secretary of State's website. For more election information, visit M N votes dot org. Remember, the general election is November 8th. Early voting opens tomorrow, September 23rd, and will continue through November 7th. Early voting opens tomorrow, September twenty-third, and will continue through November seventh. Many cities offer early voting opportunities at City Hall, or residents of Anoka County can vote at the Anoka County Elections Office. The League of Women Voters has supported informed voting for over one hundred years. In the year 2022, we have many options for how to vote. Please exercise your right to vote. Your vote is your voice. Good evening.